That's what daylight savings time will do to you.
Shots fired.
Through daylight savings time, we will call to order the community redevelopment agency. I would ask if there are any amendments to the minutes of the February 16th, 2021 meeting?
Move approval is submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? This time, I'd like to open it up to citizens to be heard if there's anyone in the audience, or if we have comments. Ms. Call.
A comment was submitted by Kathy Flaherty in time. The city of Clearwater has a policy in place that allows properties developed prior to 1999 to have large commercial dumpsters unenclosed and even placed on the right of ways. These dumpsters usually have the lids open and overflow trash onto city streets. Private property, and eventually the trash goes down the storm drain, stormwater drains into the waterways. It is a huge problem that no one seems to want to address. The CRA could give grants to businesses to enclose the dumpsters in the CRA to at least address the issue in this email area. In a city, it is a city-wide disgrace. Nothing residents should not have to put up with overflowing, smelly trash dumpsters everywhere. Also, what is the status on the road construction for the Eagle East Gate area in Cleveland Street? This is supposed to start in June, but nothing has been on any agenda for the CRA board. Is this still scheduled on time? If it is, I would like to request that the East Gate area start first. It is a residential neighborhood and crossing Gulf to Bay with no crosswalks. It is very dangerous. Disabled persons need a crosswalk put in place ASAP. Residents have been asking for years for help, but always told to wait for the road construction.
Ms. Call, we decided that we were going to do CRA meetings when we had work sessions at 8:00. Those haven't properly noticed?
Yes, and I would like to make it for the public record that that discussion was held at a publicly noticed meeting, so there was a decision by the trustees at the meeting.
And about the road construction, we're still on, and the East Gateway project, we're still on time?
Yes, so there's a bid out right now for the construction of Streets Gate Phase 3, so the city is in the process of selecting that general contractor who will actually build the work, and so then it would still start this summer. And that project, there's capital improvement project, need in the exact timeline. The important thing to note as a companion piece to that is that the CRA has-
Item 4.1, we have four presentations from our partners in downtown. Want to introduce that?
Yes. Good morning, Amanda Thompson, CRA director. A little bit like a mime.
We can hear you though, mime.
And as you know, it takes many people, many different organizations to- And this morning, you're going to hear from different organizations that work more with specific groups with arts, with community. The reason being is our two-year strategy-
Can you pull up the mic? I think Joelle is coming in. Is that it?
Can you hear me now? I can hear you fine. You guys having a problem hearing?
Well, it's not coming through our speakers here. Go ahead, Amanda.
Okay. So with that, the first part of researching into design of these programs is for everyone to understand who's in downtown now, what do they do, how are they working together? The result of last month's meeting is that the Downtown Development Board is going to lead a summit for the downtown business groups to talk about how they can cooperate. So this month, you're hearing from the Billheimer Capital Theater, from Clearwater Community Garden, and then the St. Vincent DePaul Community Kitchen. Unfortunately, the director of Hispanic Outreach Center had a family emergency, so she couldn't be here today. This is not everyone. We're missing Clearwater Arts Alliance, we're missing Jazz Holiday, we're missing Unimex from Downtown Gateway. So it's just a sample to give a brief idea.
Thank you. And first up is the Billheimer. Ms. Crockett.
Good morning. I'm Susan Crockett, President and CEO of Ruth Becker Hall, and happy to be operating the Billheimer Capital Theater. We are excited because I don't know if everyone include an exhibit of memories of the Capitol Theater over the last hundred years. We will be doing open house. Capitol Theater does about 130 events per year. We see about 65,000 to 70,000 people come through our doors. Our database reveals that we have people from 26 countries purchasing tickets, which speaks well to the community events every year. And that includes everything from dance recitals to training, private corporate trainings. We do some events that the city has use of the venue. And so our 2020 fiscal year did really well, enough to keep Ruth Becker Hall in the top five worldwide. We actually scored number three, which is quite a feat. The theater has quite a name in its- We have had, obviously, to close during this past year, but we anticipate that we will do. We have 13 shows booked between now and September 30th, and we have another 18 under negotiation, so we have potential doing another 31 once things start to open up. And we're seeing that now with the vaccine distribution. In terms of the planning for the CRA, I'm very excited to see some of the things that you're looking at doing. As you know, we've had partnerships. We've been doing the Blast Friday Miracle on Cleveland Street since 2011. And if we had done 2020, it would have been the 10th year doing that series. I certainly understand that it's moving in a different direction, and everything has its appropriate shelf life. I think we did a good job of bringing people down there, which was the initial objective that was given to us. But we were very proud of what we were able to do. We love partnering with the city. I think you know that. We did in the spring of 2019, we did a children's art festival downtown. It had both visual and performing arts components to it. We did not have the response that we had hoped to have, but I see that there's some plans of possibly doing that again in the future. We would love to be a part of that. So, you know, just to say that we are here, we love to partner. Anything that suits our mission fills our mission that we can do with our partners downtown. More than happy to do that, so thank you again for your support. Thank you for allowing us to operate the Capitol Theater. It is a gem. It is something very close to our hearts, so we appreciate it very much.
Any questions for Ms. Crockett? I see a lot of crowds with the office downtown.
Yes.
That's going well?
It is going well, and we actually have two more on the pipeline we may be doing this spring. So it's definitely, it spiked some interest, and, you know, the feedback has been pretty good, so it's fun to try new things and see it succeed.
How many more are there?
Performances of this?
Yes.
This is the last weekend coming up.
Okay. Because it was good to see so many people and them see so many people down on Cleveland Street, too.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. If you haven't been to it, please let me know. We'd love to have you come.
Thank you. Next, we have the Clearwater Community Garden. Ms. Poland.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you for allowing me to come today and your continuing support of our gardens. We started in 2016. Howard Washower started the garden. And I joined in 2017. 2018, I became manager. And roughly eight months ago, I became president of the Clearwater Community Gardens. It's funny, because we're between Cleveland and Drew, and I lived right across the street from the gardens for 32 years. So there used to be a hotel there, I think everybody remembers, and crime was very bad. The city got the property, bought the property, and tore it all down. And Howard got the garden started there, which was amazing for the area. It was just beautiful, safe. You know, we just see the young people walking dogs, kids walking to school, which we didn't see in the past. The gardens also gives a lot of the local people places to come grow organic food and bring their children and let them see. We have three beehives, so we produce our own honey. We have plant sales once a year, or was twice, now we're at once, and to help support us. We do schools. We have Zoom school there. We have little planters from Clearwater Beach come. They have a garden box there. We do classes, so we trying to help educate. We have two master gardeners, we have two herbalists, and a lot of people that just love to garden, love to grow organically. When we have, in the past, we have gone down to our local food bank with excess food that we have grown and donated to them, and we ask them what they'd like us to grow, because we have 50 boxes. We're at 48 capacity right now. So we have two that we actually grow extra food. That's basically our gardens.
We remember when the Royal Palm Hotel and the Econo Inn were there, and that was a nightmare. So it is wonderful to have this. Any questions? Councilmember Beckman?
I just wanted to make a comment. I, as it's thriving with tomatoes and cabbage right now, but it is a wonderful place, and they're expanding it with a lot of attractions for kids. So they built kind of a ship. What's your ship thing like? I mean, I haven't played on it.
It's a play area. It's, what I find with the children is for 15 minutes, we can teach them about the bees, the butterflies, the earthworms, soil, and then for 15 minutes, we have to let them play. So we have two areas, an area that we built, and it's joined with a swinging bridge. And they love to play. There's ones-
So we volunteer twice a month. There are volunteer opportunities to come and clean our shell, you know, with community building, right? And it's just, it's a wonderful place.
Moved over to Clearwater Garden Club, and I spoke with him a few weeks ago, and I thought it would be a good idea. There's a lot of garden clubs in the area. There's the Hillcrest Garden Club, Clearwater Garden Club, and it'd be great for- It's kind of a hidden secret, you know? The more we can tell people what you do, I think we can get other clubs interested and people to know that.
Yes, yes, it is. Howard is a really nice person. I'm there for him and the garden club.
Well, thank you for coming out this morning and for the partnership that we have.
Thank you.
We were supposed to have the Hispanic-
I'm a little more nervous than I'd like to be, but that's because I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and have a moment to speak with y'all. I'm going to try to talk slowly, but I feel like I have so much I want to cover. Most of you are very familiar with us already, and you know the services we have been providing for about 39 years. That would be daily hearty nutritious meals, which we have continued seven days a week throughout by moving to to-go boxes, which we're not thrilled with, but it's what we have to do at this time. And our volunteers have dropped, we lost about 70% through this crisis for fear of exposure of that service. I'd like to thank the city for providing portlets for us, because initially, we had to shut down the bathrooms, and that was really important, and we really appreciate that support. Laundry, emergency items like backpacks, shoes. People come in with toes sticking out their shoes. We provide those. We provide ID cards. Once a week, we have the Pinellas County Mobile Medical Unit, where we have about 25 to 35 senior citizens who are homeless come to us, and we provide vitamins, nutritional supplements, protein shakes, these kind of things to help sustain jackets, things to help them as they continue on their journey. We also provide notary service. We help people with navigating- We do have our chapel where we have a service once a week. We're doing that outside on Sundays now to, you know, promote social distancing, but the chapel is open for prayer and meditation for our clients. About, excuse me, about three years ago, our Board of Directors decided that we need the homeless with the two things they need most, which are jobs and housing. And so with that, we partnered with PERC to bring in the STARS program, which is an employee that's into housing and with jobs. And in addition to that, we noticed that, you know, entry-level jobs do not help to support a lifestyle. You can't afford jobs. So starting on the 22nd, the people of manufacturing, Greg Sireeau's company is coming in to help do additional training with Manuf- Program 2019, we've had 62 students graduate and get permanent housing and stable job employment, and that's fairness. And we are a founding partner of the Going Home Clearwater, which is a coalition of organizations that have the goal of reducing homelessness and housing. And those are the people we want to reach and impact, and that's our goal. So the question was posed when I got this invitation, I was very excited, was how are we participating in the revitalization of downtown? And so I'd like to say that one way is by helping people get jobs and housing. We have received grant funding through a systemic change grant to help with that process, because what we found was when the STARS program came to us, it was originally created as an ex-offender program. And most of those people had housing. So our referrals are people coming in who are trying to get jobs but are sleeping on the streets. And getting from being on the streets to in a home takes a lot of effort, first and last month's rent, utility deposits, furniture. So we're filling that gap to help them move into housing. And HEP and Community Service Foundation have been instrumental in helping us with that, and we continue to move toward building additional relationships. And so through this process, we've started doing case management, where we're now having to track our work and to help these STARS graduates continue on to ensure that they are successfully moving into housing and work. So that being said, we also, my staff and I monitor our property and the businesses around us two to three times a day to make sure that we are not being a burden to the businesses around us and our neighbors. We're making sure we're keeping it clean and free of, I think, people and debris. We had to be very cognizant of that with to-go boxes, and we made it very clear it was not acceptable to leave things out. And so we have not had a problem with that. I've picked up very few. We've put out a lot of trash cans. So I've also invited a Boy Scout to do his Eagle Scout project with us, and he's repainting the building, the facade, and doing landscaping and making it more beautiful for our neighborhood. So we really appreciate the partners we have. We appreciate the city and the support we've had, and we look forward to continuing on.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bond. Any questions? Councilmember Hamilton?
You mentioned how many volunteers you've lost due to the pandemic. Have you stayed in contact with them as far as, hopefully, you're getting towards the end of this pandemic? Are they interested in still, in coming back? We just got to get there?
We've had about a dozen return over the past few weeks because they had their second vaccine.
Good.
So we're very hopeful. We're looking forward to having them come back. I have invited groups of teenagers, because being a mom of teenagers for many years, I understand community service hours, and I think it's great to engage them and teach them. So I've provided a lot of opportunities for them to come in with minimal exposure or no exposure. And so they filled in some gaps with us, but yes, they are coming back.
Good news. I know you may not have an exact number, but if you could give a guess on what are the percentage of kind of the hardcore homeless that don't really want to get training and find a job versus the people that are ready to kind of break the-
Well, based on the surveys, I'd say about 10%, but it's interesting, because some of the graduates we've had this past year who are now housed were homeless for a very long time. Systemic issues that, but it's not enough to sustain them. Disability, but if they work, they lose their disability. And if they work, they can't make enough to make up for that. So there's this catch-22. It's a real struggle. My operations manager was homeless for 10 years on the streets of Clearwater. And our kitchen supervisor, who started with us this year, was homeless for, I believe, three years before coming to us. And they are vital to the work and encouragement and accountability to help them continue on.
And if you had more resources, what would be the next thing you would add to your suite of services?
Well, I mean, I would love to have a full-time case manager who could work on developing more relationships with housing. As you know, affordable housing is a huge problem. We always know that. There's not enough housing for everybody who needs housing. But in addition to that, people need jobs where they can support themselves, not entry-level minimum wage jobs. So if we had a case manager who could work on developing more relationships and figuring out who we can bring in to help with that job training and to work with more housing, I think we could. But to me, it's not good enough. And so as we go, we keep identifying what the issues are. And so we'd like to be able to address those and follow these people better than we are.
Well, we tried to create some more jobs, and unfortunately, that didn't work out last year. So I thank you for coming out today. Councilmember Beckman?
Yeah, I got, so I'm part of the continuum of care and so, and on the funders council. So I'm beginning to understand with providers, we have funders. And you mentioned the HMIS system that you're keeping track of data that allows us to make data-driven decisions, which is all fantastic, but there's a, you know, one-on-one, right?
Sure. We started with HMIS system when it was being managed by 211. And so there was not a cost there. So we were grandfathered in, and so we are not paying a cost, however. We're allowed nine licenses. So anything beyond that, we have to pay, and it's substantial.
Do you know how much it is per license? Is it like $5,000 or?
No, it's not that much. I, I'd hate to quote it, because I can't remember now.
But there is a cost.
Yes. We don't have that ability to have people there. I mean, we have volunteers. We have 10 volunteers who work in our front office, you know, one every day of the week, one in the front office and one to do IDs. So we don't have another person to check in, you know, when they're eating. Yeah. Yeah, we didn't want to take on any additional cost with that. And right now, we really don't have the volunteers, so.
And if you don't mind, I mean, I don't know if you feel comfortable in sharing this information, but how much do you pay your case management?
Well, right now, we can't afford it, so we don't. I'm doing the case management. I'm doing the case management. I came into this position, Pete Scalia, I know all of you know Pete. He retired, and the year before he retired, I was their grant manager with a local nonprofit consultant. And so I got to know the organization very well. I really like the board and the people there. They do great work. And so when Pete wanted to retire, he asked if I would come in. So since then, I've come in and made some adjustments, you know, some assessments, and with that, developed a case management database and have started doing case management. But PERC and I have met, and Mike Jalazo and I have discussed how we could partner and get a case manager together, because they're from STARS graduates. And so that's our hope, to start with that and then go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Bond.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Pete was part-time. I'm full-time. So I don't want it to seem like, because I've taken on volunteer coordination and case management. He did great work, but now the board has brought me in with expectations to develop programs and additional services, especially related to substance abuse and mental health. And we know we can do that. It's just a matter of time. And one. Thank you.
Thank you. 4.2.
Yes, approved the commercial beautification grant program for property owners and tenants to improve the visual appearance of commercial properties through exterior improvements and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same. At our last CRA meeting, I gave an overview of objectives and outlines for three new grant programs to reduce blight and vacancy. And we're proposing two of them today. The third one, which was the larger grant, will come next month. So with this one, the objectives are the program, and this is eligible for property owners or tenants.
Amanda.
Going in a little bit more to the requirements.
Amanda, if I can interrupt you for one minute. Y'all don't feel obligated to stay, like you gave your report. You don't have, we will not be offended. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, no worries at all. So a little bit, I mean, if you want to stay, then you should join local government. Two items, both grant programs, reducing blight and vacancy. We want to establish a clear, ongoing process and program requirement, so no matter who's in my position, people know how to act effective May 1st. So with this beautification one, we're proposing $250,000 over the- So we know we're talking about 2021 and 2022. That number can be adjusted by all of you at any time. Should we have less demand? Should we have more demand? Then we can come back and prepare a budget amendment. So for this one, this is program eligibility. You have to be within the CRA, of course. Commercial or mixed-use property. At the time, the property has to be in fair or poor condition. So if your property is in good shape now, and this would be a judgment made by CRA staff, this is not the code enforcement level of blight, which is a much, much, much higher standard to reach. So if your property's been recently painted and you just decided you'd like a new door, you would not be eligible for this. This is really for properties that are in bad condition. At the time, you have to have an active tenant, or you have to show that you will have a total project cost that's $25,000 or less. So the CRA's role is if you have a project that is $5,000 or less, the CRA will 100% fund that for eligible improvements. Once you go over $5,000, then it's a 50/50 match. The CRA grant maxes out at $12,500. So in the current budget of $250,000, we could fund up to 20 properties at the $12,500 amount. Judgments, fines, et cetera. You need to be in good standing. This is all four sides of the building, windows, doors, painting, roof repairs, siding materials, minor side improvements. This could include enclosing dumpsters. Should a tenant or property owner want to do that, relocate or enclose a dumpster. The process is tenant or property owner will complete the application. CRA staff will review it. They would need to receive two quotes completed six months in the execution of the grant agreement. In most cases, they will not need a building permit. If they do, then we'll make sure they get the building permit before we execute the grant agreement. And then all payments on reimbursement basis. So they do the work, they submit a paid invoice, we issue the reimbursement. And at this level, this would all be-
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'm wondering, you know, we have pre-approved contractors that do million-dollar projects for us in the city. My question is, do we have any type of list of, say, contractors of, and I'm going to use the vice mayor kind of as a example, contractors that do smaller jobs that could we, could we put together a list? Or is there a way for us to have a list of those and then go out to individual properties and say, "Look, you know, we can help you here. You know, we've got these, here, we've got a list of contractors that are capable of doing the work for you, and, you know, all you need to do is, you know, you put up 50% of the money, and we've got 50% up to, you know, a $25,000 project." And kind of, kind of nudge them along a little bit? Is there, is there a way for us to accumulate or put together that-
Form of that for some of our housing rehab. But I would be very concerned about the CRA being in the business of that. And we all, then we get in a position of being the guarantor or appearing to be the guarantor of whether or not they're happy with it or it's successful. So I don't think we want to select people's contractors.
But the other side to that coin is if our money's going into it, don't we want to know who's doing the work? If our money's going into it, I would think we would want to know who's doing the work and make sure that it's a qualified, certified contractor that's-
Well, you do want them to be licensed, but beyond that, I see.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Years ago, in the Brownfield District, I think, they were giving grants to bring housing up. And so I was just one of maybe 20 contractors. You know, I've also been involved with that on other companies that I've been in. And if you qualify for a company, you know, you can say, "Hey, I'm interested in doing the-" So when you, somebody has, I mean, we don't necessarily have to oversee the work, but, I mean, done right. So we give a call to our qualified contractors, and out of 10, you may get five that show up that, you know, are interested in doing it. So might be a good, like a phone call, and you don't even get it back. But I know that when you're talking about the kind of money- But I know that when you're talking about the kind of money that we're talking about in grants and giving money out, I mean, you'd get some interest on that. So it might not be a bad.
Right, for who provides these kind of services?
Or an RFQ.
RFQ and then create a list off of that, which, which we could do. I think some of the, you know, if they wanted to do one small replacement, they would do that directly themselves.
Yeah, but if you're just doing a front door, while we're, you know, again, if you're putting in a front, just a front door, and it, I wouldn't necessarily, if the property is in bad shape, I wouldn't necessarily want the property owner doing the work themselves because I'm not sure the quality of the final work. I don't want to put a new door in that's going to, you know, when you knock on it.
Right, Mike. So I mean, so they have to be, they have to have a contractor do that. Even something as small as a window or door, to make sure it's done right, so.
We may be getting in the weeds here.
We think a little bit more about these different improvements and talk to our building official, right, to know what might make sense to get pre-qualified firms on board versus not and bring that back to.
Nearing a licensed.
Yes.
Insured contractor.
Yes. You have to follow all existing city regulations related to the building and construction and having a business.
Taste.
Taste.
We don't regulate color.
Right. Just to, just to be clear.
Statement about an applicant could use some of the funds to enclose dumpsters. That's only if they have some sort of mixed use for business, correct? It's not those apartments, because some of them apply to an apartment.
This does not apply to residential properties. We're, we're working on residential programs in 2022.
Okay.
The standard of what is good, in good shape, fair shape or bad shape? Are we going to put some criteria? One of the things that I'm starting to get really, and I think you know this, but going forward, I really want to put things in writing for standards so we can eliminate ambiguity. Because that seems to be a problem throughout the entire CRA is that applicant, and I want to try to eliminate that a little bit because what I think is good may be different from what you think is good versus, you know, the applicant. So that's, that's just one thing. I'm very happy that we're limiting this to one grant for every five years. I think that's wise. The thing I do question is, where did we come up with the number of 12, 5 on our part?
The 50% match?
Yes.
That came from the food and drink program where we did a 50% match and also from looking at other CRA funding across the state. Typically, they don't do more than 25%. You'll have some range between 25 to 50% or the CRA is owning the entire redevelopment project. I will say, our, these grant programs for exterior and interior build-out are rare. I can't stand up here and say it's the only one. But Overtown CRA, which is in the city of Miami, they limit their build-outs to $10,000. That's, other than facade grants where the CRA is a full project partner, most funding's very limited. So in our current market condition, but the reason this is limited to a two-year budget is because I think that's going to dramatically change after the parks open, after we figure out what happens with Cleveland Street, all of those kind of things. So it, so one is, is just the grant programs that exist in areas across the state, our own experience, and then to make the math easy and understandable. Because as you're saying, when people are reading these applications and getting unclear, a lot of people know how to divide by two easier than four or six.
Yeah, I'm just, the only reason I ask is 25,000, and I asked the Vice Mayor to chime in on this, 25,000 doesn't go very far anymore for really working on the facade, especially, you know, some of the corners and between painting windows, you can eat it up in a heartbeat. I mean, 25,000 doesn't buy you anything. So that's my only concern. I would like to at least review this after six months to see how many people have applied and in our opinion, whether the numbers are right. I mean, if they're going like hotcakes and people are doing $25,000 projects, that's marvelous. But if they're not being consumed, then I don't want to wait for two years. I'd rather review it in six months and see where we're at. I don't know what your thoughts are on the.
Well, I could tell you.
On the denomination.
Yeah, I did a, my, my son is going through a remodeling project, so I helped him by doing a spreadsheet just before we got started on material costs as far as, now I've been retired four years. And, I mean, you could literally overdouble what I had figured on different material costs because it's so, it's sky-high now. I mean, I would never thought that I had to pay $32 for a sheet of plywood four or five years ago. But I know that CRA has a little bit of history here because I remember the DDB used to have a, a grant program. We'd give 50,000 for a, trying to bring restaurants into downtown and 50,000 doesn't go anywhere for kitchen remodels. So we never really worked successful on that. But, yeah, I think it's a good idea to look at it again in six months and see where we are.
So remember, as part of this too, signage is eligible. Come in and use this to buy a new sign and buy a higher quality sign than what they might have normally purchased. I, so I completely agree and that's why there's three spending levels. And part of what broke out for the three different grant programs is the financial guarantee that the CRA would require, right, for that amount of grant funds. So one of the challenges we hear is if it's a larger amount of money, then you need, we need to be able to mortgage the property or you have to provide a personal financial guarantee to ensure if it's due downtown. So this is a way to say, we, we can't, we're not going to, this will not fund all your hopes and dreams. This is, this is a help for minor improvements, this specific program. And then as we get more towards the hopes and dreams level of funding, we're narrowing that world to things that generate pedestrian uses. Because we really want people on the street and back and forth.
Do I have a, do I have a motion? Do I approve? A move?
Oh, wait, wait. We can't have a motion because I have a comment and I do have one.
Okay.
Sorry. A comment was submitted by Kathy Flaherty that these programs need to be available to all businesses within the CRA. Cleveland Street, especially the 300, 600 block, have received millions in support over the years where nothing has been done in the rest of the district. It is shameful. Please make sure these grants are given to businesses throughout the CRA. The trustees already give the Downtown Development Board hundreds of thousands of CRA funds to promote the area alone. The rest of the CRA should go to the areas outside the Downtown Development District.
Ms. Thompson, does this money, is it available to everyone in the CRA from Highland to the waterfront and from Chestnut to Drift?
That is correct.
So they have to apply?
They have it.
We can provide the water, but we can't make people drink, right?
I cannot force you to improve your building or take money.
Okay. Other question? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, 4.3.
Okay, thank you. Approve the White Box Grant Program to assist owners and or tenants with renovating commercial spaces to attract businesses that generate pedestrian foot traffic and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. So this program, the first program that you just adopted can't be combined with any other one. This one is to address those projects, both interior and exterior, that might be at a larger project budget. The grant, so the goal really here is to allow for those pop-up type uses, right, and to increase the number of pedestrian traffic generating uses. So it's, it's limited to retail and restaurant businesses, personal services like barber shops, health spas, dance studios, art studios, galleries, theaters, other cultural and community gathering spaces. It can be awarded to a property owner or tenant, really looking at projects that don't exceed $100,000 for our purposes. If your project costs $150,000 total to do, that's fine, but for CRA funds, our grant is capped out at $50,000. So with this one, the first $25,000 in eligible improvements, the CRA will fully pay. This would get you, for example, one ADA bathroom, right? Does someone have a question?
No.
After that, it's a 50% match. So building on the last program, the eligible expenses here. So you have all your exterior work. Inside, you can do energy efficiency improvements. You can do room and space reconfiguration. You can do any kind of ADA, plumbing, electrical, anything that stays with the building. So both interior and exterior, with the exception of signage, we're looking for improvements that stay with the building. Now, this cannot be an exterior-only grant. That's a restriction. Because if you're just doing exterior, we're going to ask you to go with the facade program. So same thing, you have to have a licensed contractor, you have to be free from any liens and judgments, have to have a current business license. At the time of this grant, the property does need to be vacant. So this is targeted towards vacant properties. Then you have to have a tenant, once the, the work is done and it's open. Sorry, let me just make sure I have the timeline correct here. And we're looking for a minimum of a two-year lease. If you have a pop-up use and say you're only going to have that awesome sneaker store for three months, the property owner has to show us a plan of what other uses they're going to be bringing in for their remaining two years. And they can swap and change that out as long as it's one of those eligible uses. Details on this, you have one year from execution of the grant agreement to complete the work. The CRA director can authorize grants up to $50,000. We have to review and approve all the paid invoices in order for us to send our funds out. And in consultation with legal, we could have the authority to modify the payment process, let's say if they need some portion of the funds upfront or we hold some portion of the funds to the end. And if it's a very, if it's the largest grant or the risk, if the risk seems very high, then, you know, the CRA attorney could require that they do some kind of personal guarantee if we think it warrants that. So we're not saying everyone's going to have to do a personal guarantee, but in some cases you might. And we will spell that out in the application of when that requirement would be triggered.
Questions for Ms. Thompson? Councilmember Beckman?
I just wanted to say, I really like these two programs. I like that, that the tenants or the property owners have to invest their own funds and I like that they have to have a tenant security. That's what people are interested in.
Vice Mayor?
So no lien on the property for this grant? Okay. I think that was a problem we had before.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I, I like the program, don't get me wrong. I just, I'm kind of a, given the history of, of some of this, if the property owner comes forward, he has to have a tenant on the, on the line to occupy the space when, when the improvements are done, correct?
Correct.
Now, what if the tenant backs out before the, you know, while the improvements are being done, if the tenant backs out, is there a timeframe that they have to get the, get the, get a new tenant?
Well, right now, everything's on a reimbursement basis. So if they don't have a, a tenant, they wouldn't be receiving the funds for reimbursement.
And I, I guess my other question is, if we're putting money into the building and the owner decides to sell the building and our improvements raise the value of the property, do we get immediate reimbursement of our money? Or do they have to stay the owner of that property to, because this is a, is this a grant to, our loan-to-grant program?
This is tied to a two-year lease with a tenant that generates in one of those three areas, retail, restaurant, the personal service or the cultural. So if the property owner could change, but as long as the lease is effective and they're in there and operating, it would, the grant agreement would still be in place. If they don't find a tenant or they lose a tenant, then they don't receive the funds. If they have a, a tenant that goes out of business after a year, then I have the authority to extend the grant agreement for a certain amount of time to find another tenant before they would be in violation. So, I mean, this, this is a risk. This is a two-year risk at a maximum of $50,000.
Pam, you feel comfortable with that?
I don't know if Michael has anything to add on that.
Okay, other questions? I have a com, Vice Mayor?
Now, this one is, is this just for the downtown, not the entire CRA?
This is the entire CRA. But you do have to be, you know, the, the, a commercial property, right, and attracting one of those three uses. But it is open to the entire CRA.
Okay. Thought I saw something here that said restaurant, retail, but I guess, can't find it now. Retail and restaurant businesses. Oh, and personal service business. Okay, okay.
And galleries.
Galleries.
And the space has to currently be vacant. So that's, that's the big, you know, modifier, right, for this because our, we're honed in on reducing vacancy.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with it. I know that before, we were trying to target the core to get the spark going. And a lot of the emails we got were asking why we weren't spending money elsewhere, but like, you know, now we're spreading it out, so.
Yes. A comment was submitted by Kathy Flaherty. Once again, these funds should be allocated to all the CRA and even more so to projects outside the Downtown Development District as the CRA Council has given the CRA funds generated in that area to Downtown Development Board. If that board would like to use the CRA funds it received for improvements to that area, great, but let the remaining CRA funds raised outside the DDB district go to projects outside of that area.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the White Box Grant Program?
Second. Are you all in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, 4.4.
Thank you. So this item is to discuss the future use of CRA-owned property at 701 Franklin Street. As you know, or actually, most people do not know or remember, the CRA purchased the, the big white warehouse at 701 Franklin Street in early 2019 for $525,000. The intention of that was to assist with land assemblage, which had been planned for over numerous capital improvement programs and budgets and downtown plans over, you know, 10 or 20 years for multimodal center. So whether it became a multimodal center, a mixed-use redevelopment, the CRA was, was participating in the land assemblage. And now, as you wear your city council hat, we know that PSTA is coming forward looking for letters of support on, on this site to build a multimodal center. So just need some direction today, really around two questions. Should this CRA property be included? And, you know, if we sell it to the city, you know, or if we put it out for bid, which CRA Attorney Fueno can talk you through more of that process if you'd like to, do we expect to be fully reimbursed for the purchase or not?
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, this, this parcel is real important to the intermodal center because if rail comes, this is our connection to rail. And, yeah, I think it was bought originally for the intermodal center. I didn't realize it's CRA. I thought the city owned it. So that's why it's here today because we're trying to, we're trying to get everything in order to be able, but as far as a CRA is, is concerned, the intermodal center is going to be mixed use. So I think it will definitely, you know, it's a good move to, I don't know if the CRA needs to contribute or whether the city does. I'm not sure how we're, we need to set it up. It's just a little kink, I guess, we need to work out. It's just a little kink, I guess, we need to work out. I hope the PSTA depot comes. We've only been talking about it for, you know, 20 years. We bought that time, you know, all at one site. So, obviously, I think we've got to be patient. I know PSTA has their spot. That warehouse may come in handy with Imagine Clearwater for an interim time period. It's in reasonable proximity, it's in, it's a bunker, basically. But I think we ought to reserve it, you know, for the intermodal center. The question that I would ask is, you know, what are we expecting to be reimbursed? And I think that's really a function of what's going to happen on the site, what happens over on the current PSTA site, and with the county parking lot. I'm expecting a lot of cooperation between all the different agencies, because we've been extraordinarily patient in land banking that land on court. And we probably could have sold it for a different use by now, and at least had our money back, but, I mean, I think we're still in a wait-and-see mode, as much as I'd like to move forward on something. Ms. Aiken, do you have?
I do.
You clearly have angst in your eyes.
I'm just full of angst this early in the morning. What PSTA is asking us to do is to ultimately, and fairly, fairly soon, enter into a swap agreement for the property identified for the PSTA site, one of which, and a portion of this is the property that Amanda has described. The, so, they will be asking us to actually enter into a swap agreement for that. The issue, there's a couple of issues. One for CRA, which is, what is their role in that? Do we pay them for that land? And, or is, or is that a donation they make to the city? This process that we're going to have to go through, from a procedural standpoint, is pretty lengthy. We have to give CRA, CRA will have to give notice of its intent to convey the property to the city. We, the city, has to give notice of its intent to convey the PSTA property, and they're looking for assurances from us in fairly short order.
Have we done appraisals on both sites?
We have appraisals underway. One set of appraisals is back, but we have to get two, because of the size of the property. That set is not back yet. But I think the direction that we need, Ms. Thompson has to get direction on what she does, and then we have to get direction on whether or not you want us to begin to move forward on all this, in terms of the notice provisions, declaration of surplus, intent to redevelop, et cetera.
Well, I want to move forward. My assumption is the city is going to buy the property from the CRA.
Okay. That's the direction.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we're under a little time constraint here. Originally, I started going out for my letters of support from the community back last year. And, well, the new administration's come in, so it's bumped back a little bit on this bill grant. The bill grant's what we're going on with PSTA. We're going for a bill grant. It's in the Ford Pinellas priorities list. So, we got support from Ford Pinellas on it. But we need to have this letter of support from the City of Clearwater by mid-April, because the bill grant's going to be sometime toward the end of April, that's when they're going to be looking at awarding this grant. I think this year, the, the last two years, and maybe even longer, on the bill grant. And it's a very competitive grant process. This year, I really feel like we have a good chance of getting this grant. We're talking a $20 million grant. The FDOT has already committed to matching funds, they're, they're in on it. And this is something that's going to be, it's not a bus station, so I don't want anybody to get the idea that we're swapping a bus station for a bigger piece of land. This is an intermodal center with probably structured parking. PSTA has already got the grant, and they've hired, they did a RFP, and they've hired their engineer to do Phase 1, and they're with the city now, finding out how the design will fit into our current code. So, this little piece here we're talking about today is, we need to make a decision on it, because we're hoping by this summer, we'll have some kind of a plan on what they want to put together for what that site's going to look like. And, and maybe by this summer, we'll know if we are going to receive funds. So, things will move real quick now.
Mr. Delk?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on what the Vice Mayor mentioned.
Want you? Come up, please.
The, I talked to Cassandra with PSTA late last week. They have a notice of funding opportunity that is by law, has to be advertised by February 26th, that can be advertised a little sooner than that. And from that point forward, they have four to six weeks to get the application in on the funds. So, because of the letter that they would like to send to the government, federal agency with regard to our local match, we have to get that before you in a timely manner, so that you can make that determination, and we can sign the letter. So, we've got a little more than mid-April, but not a lot, so that's the reason we need to decide how we're going to handle the, you know, the CRA-city transaction. And then, whatever the culmination of that is, get it before you in a manner that you can make a determination on. That's the, so, we have a little bit more window than mid-April, but it's, it's quickly closing.
And where are we on the county parking lot?
Where's Mike? Mike is not in here. Is this a hot potato?
So, we've, we've made contact with the county, Michael and I, and Tara met with them probably about a month ago. They needed to explore some additional ways to make, make a transfer on their side. And we will be having a meeting relatively soon. We have not heard back from them yet, but we'll reach out again and see where they're at.
Well, I mean, the PSTA site to us is, in my opinion, not all that valuable. It's a heck of a lot. I, I mean, I'll look forward to seeing what the appraisals are, but the property we're talking about is significantly more valuable than the PSTA site, even with the county parking lot. And I would hope the county administrator and commissioners are on board with a partnership, you know? And if, if we need to be involved on the elected side, I'd like to know, and then individual county commissioners. But, I mean, I think we bent over backwards, and I may sound a little impatient about that, and that's because I am. You know, I mean, we were talking about this when I was in office the first time, I'd been out for eight years, we're still talking about it, so.
The, what the county's expressed to us from the administration side is support for moving forward. It's more about functionally trying to figure out the best way for them to transfer it to us, to how do, how do we swap it, or do we have to pay for it, because it is a utility site? So, there are some, some elements that they needed to work through on their side, but administration has expressed that they are in favor of it.
Okay. Chief, are the recruits outside?
Yeah, that's the noise.
Okay. We're, we're going to adjourn the CRA for just a moment. Call to order the work session. And the reason for that is, we have some new police recruits.
Are we done with the CRA?
No, we're coming back.
I'll be right here.
I just don't want these folks sitting. So, if I could call forward, William Spellman, Alexis Kelsey, Amina Tyback, Hannah Analt, Luke Omar, Parker Moody, Dante Como, Robert Jessup, and Brian Rowell. Good morning, everybody. Congratulations, in a second. Chief?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Dan Star, Chief of Police. Like to take the opportunity to interview a police cadet on November 23rd, and she's earned her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Central Florida, and graduated from the St. Petersburg Law Enforcement Academy in February of 2021. Dante Cuomo is a decorated United States Air Force veteran, degree from Community College of the Air Force in 2018. Robert Jessup graduated from the University of South Florida in 2019 with a bachelor's degree in management. Robert received his associate's degree from, Alexis Kelsey earned her associate's degree and a bachelor's degree in information technology from Brower College. She also attended Winona State University and Northwest Missouri State, studying psychology as a summer intern, providing clerical support, shadowing on ride-alongs, and participating in scenario-based training. She graduated from the Law Enforcement Academy in November of 2020. Parker Moody is a decorated United States Marine in the Denver Sheriff's Office from 2016 to 2017, and he received his Bachelor of Arts degree from, who served from 2000 in Toluca, worked as a police officer for the Fairfax County, Virginia Police Department in 2015 to a Florida law enforcement exam in 2013. And following his college graduation, Brian worked as a police officer for Evanstown Police Department in Evanstown, Illinois from 2017 to 2021. William Spellman earned his bachelor's degree from Florida Gulf Coast University in Fort Myers in February 2020, and he graduated from the Law Enforcement Academy in February 2021. Amina Tyback earned her bachelor's degree in finance from the University of South Florida in May 2018. She is currently employed, or was currently employed full-time at Andreets Incorporated as a project consulting, project, project controlling manager. And she graduated from the Law Enforcement Academy in February 2021. And with your permission, Mayor, I'd ask that the clerks swear them in.
Before she does that, Chief, could everybody go down?
Hannah Analt, sir.
Dante Como.
Robert Jessup.
Alexis Kelsey.
Parker Moody.
Luke Omar.
Brian Rowell.
Liam Stone.
Amina Tyback.
Great, thank you. Ms. Cole?
I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Patient of reverence.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And the Charter and laws.
And the Charter and laws.
Of the City of Clearwater.
Of the City of Clearwater.
And I am duly qualified.
And I am duly qualified.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
On which now I'm about to enter.
On which now I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Congratulations. Welcome, and be safe.
Well done.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well, I want to congratulate the entire class, and welcome them to the family of Clearwater. I also want, because we know what it means to have a police officer on safe, and that God will bless you in your career, and that you will stay here until your retirement. And we will get pictures. Normally, we allow the family to come behind us and take photo. Hamilton?
If I can have a little personal privilege here, shows how long I've been up here, but, you know, we're getting ready to lose a great officer from our force, we'll see him and all of our new recruits, but Laura, we're going to miss you. Thank you, congratulations on your retirement, and.
All right, we will recess the work session and call back to order the CRA, item 4.4. So, I think we left off just with the overall discussion of what to do with the Franklin Street CRA's ownership, so that we have control of the entire parcel by the city itself, rather than the CRA?
I'm good with that.
This we have to bring forward to you, but we do have, now we have your direction, we know which way you want to go, and that will make it easier for us to do that.
Do you want a vote that that is our intent, sir?
The one outstanding question, I mean, I would, I would recommend that we would request, we would set our price at $525,000, which is what the CRA paid for it, versus the, what occurred.
We ought to do. I don't think we should charge a premium to the city. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Director?
Very briefly. For state-required, but still beautiful and informative annual report from what the CRA did last year is now available at downtown Clearwater dot is it. Thank you so much for your support this morning.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anything else from the trustees? Seeing, we'll adjourn the CRA and reconvene the work session. We are on item 3.1.
I have signed in our federal lobbyist, Harry Glenn, to come, and he wanted to prescribe any of those items that he suggested should be on there, as well as some of the appropriation requests that we will be working on, that were identified by council as well as by staff. So, if Mr. Glenn could come up.
Good to my COVID glasses here. Well, good morning, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. City Manager, it's good to see you all again, and I've been with you for a while, so it's, chambers look different than the last time I was here. Some priorities for your federal legislative agenda, and also to, I think, address the America Rescue Plan, some issues related to that, in case you have any questions about that. And also, I know the mayor and others want to talk about opportunity zones, since we're obviously continuing to support COVID funding and support for the city and your first responders. We'll talk about that in a little bit. And also, to keep an eye out for you on changes in FEMA policy related to reimbursement. FEMA's been a bit of a challenge during the COVID period, and changing some of the rules and regulations for reimbursement, what expenses to reimburse for, and the issue of transitioning from rescue to recovery periods, and what that entails as for reimbursement, and that the paperwork requirements aren't too overburdening. Second issue on your agenda here is infrastructure investment. Focus of this Congress is going to be on some type of an infrastructure investment. The President hasn't laid out his, the totality of his package yet, so we have a lot more questions than we have answers right now. Do an address to a joint session of Congress, similar to a State of the Union, where he's going to lay out in more detail what he's looking at. During the campaign, he proposed $2 trillion in infrastructure investment, schools and other infrastructure. So, we will find that when we can. Questions that have yet to be determined, is this going to be a bipartisan process, or are they going to use the, what they call budget right? As you know, the federal gas tax is not keeping, keeping up with expenses or requirements of the Transportation Trust Fund. So, the question is whether, whether they will raise the gas tax, convert to some type of a, will they change the 2017 Tax Act and re, and raise some of those tax rates that are in there to help generate some revenue? So, we don't know the answer to that. So, but we'll continue to track that, to make the opportunities for the city in there. They're open with those issues, so we'll keep an eye on that for you. I'll pass on opportunity zones for now, we'll come back to that. Third issue would be National Flood Insurance Program, certainly nowhere in the country, and Pinellas County's more heavily in term extensions since 2012, the last time the National Flood Insurance Program was reauthorized. Some significant changes were made in 2012, and then subsequently rolled back. Congress has been wrestling with this one, you're flurging that the price increases aren't too much, and that the flood maps that they're using to generate these rates are up to date. So, the current flood insurance program was extended last September. Issue for you all to keep an eye on, and we will continue to work with the city on this, is FEMA in 2019 tried to roll out a program called Risk Rating 2.0. It was a new way that they had come up with to try and set flood, if you're in a certain flood zone, you pay a certain rate. This would change that, you could actually have houses one behind the other paying significantly different rates, depending on their flood history and their building standards and other things. Mike Twitty, who's the, for the COVID shutdown, and talked to him about the Risk Rating 2.0 program. I think right now, there's just more questions than there are answers about it, and I would not be surprised if the current Risk Rating 2.0, currently, there's no act, there's an acting administrator FEMA, there's no permanent administrator yet, so that may be delayed, but we'll, we'll watch that, that could seriously impact some of your residents. Fourth issue that we had on, the threat of ransomware, the threat of cyber attacks. We know, we've seen what happened in Oldsmar with their water supply system up there. Congress Security Advisor for each state that would be funded by the federal government, the idea being that there'd be a state advisor, somebody in each state that was available to municipalities to help them discuss, prepare for, think of time this year, it's going to be rolling out in the next couple of months, through the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, to provide grants to communities to help prepare for cybersecurity issues, make sure you're up to speed, set certain states, see what happened in Oldsmar. make sure you're up to speed, set certain states, see what happened in Oldsmar, happens around other parts of the country, to be ready for, for that. So we actually have, a year ago, hired a new vice president at our firm who established the side of the staff if, if we need to sit down with her. She'd be happy to sit down virtually these days, but happy to do a meeting with your staff and talk about challenges that other communities are facing, what federal resources might be available and, and help. And then the last issue here is on energy. Obviously, Clearwater Gas is part of our responsibility to you and part of your interest, and a lot of discussion in Congress on, on the future and what's going to happen with energy, but we continue to stay in close contact with Chuck Warrington to make sure that he's aware of what's going on in Washington, and he does. So with that, I thought I'd just real quickly talk for a minute about the American Rescue Plan. As you know, is my, what I've seen, the estimates the city will be receiving about $20 million from the Department of Treasury as a result of the, of the new COVID relief bill that was signed into law last Thursday. Probably the biggest change from previous CARES Act, obviously the number one change is the smaller communities like Clearwater will get direct funding from Treasury. As you know, the, the first CARES Act only provided funding to communities over $500,000, so Pinellas County received, it was the only municipality in the county to receive direct funding. This year, you'll receive your own allotment. Second biggest change is probably that one of the, one of the allowances for use of the funds, still to be defined, is for lost revenue to the city. For your losses, lost sales taxes, any lost online sales tax, lost gas tax revenue, even lost park and recreation fee revenue, and lost court filings. Doesn't really impact you, but it impacts the county. So they're, they're looking for a broad definition of what would be considered lost revenue. The key to this will be what Treasury puts out in their guidance, which we expect to come out in the next couple of days, at least the first iteration of that. I will warn you that during the CARES Act period, Treasury issued guidance and then they reissued guidance three or four times. So it's tricky, you have to stay up with it. They also do a pretty good job at providing a list of frequently asked questions and answers, and so that, that has been good guidance. And what I would say to you, your staff, City Manager, is if you see things on there that you have questions about when the guidance comes out, or if there are things you don't agree with or suggest changes, Treasury is really open to taking suggestions. So anything you see that's problematic or not clear, we should, we should communicate with them about that, because as they issue their further guidance, that will, I think, be a helpful source for them. Other issue of expect payment within 60 days of the bill becoming law, which was Thursday, so that would mean payment must be made to the community between now and May 10th. In the first CARES Act, even in this legislation, there's a requirement that the state has to submit a certification to Treasury indicating that they're willing to accept the funds and that they'll accept the funds under the guidelines provided in the legislation. It's unclear exactly, it only applies to the states. The legislation doesn't apply that to communities, but we're being told by Treasury there will be some type of a certification process. In most cases, the county administrator or city managers were signing those certifications on behalf of the city. There'll be some type, City Manager, some type of a document that you'll probably submit. Mainly, that's just to trigger so that they know where to send the funds and do all those sort of things. And so we should see some guidance hopefully on that this week, and so that, that's a little bit of a change from before. There will be reports required, so obviously keeping, just like your tax returns, keeping all of your receipts and keeping copious details of how you use the money is going to be important, but there will be a process where you actually have to file some type of report. Unclear what that is, the legislation wasn't very clear, but there'll be some type of reporting requirement. It was a little loosey goosey under the CARES Act, there weren't, it wasn't a formal reporting requirement there. And then probably important to all of you, use of the funds. Four major categories for use of the funds. One is to respond to the public health emergency. I know you did this with some CARES Act dollars and with some of your own city dollars to help small businesses, restaurants, hospitality industry with losses that they may have incurred. Second is to respond to workers performing essential work, so that's your employees, people who are on the front lines are responding to COVID, working in public health clinics, helping to manage the vaccine, helping to do testing, setting up those sites. All of those are reimbursable with these funds. Third, we talked about lost revenue. We talked pretty extensively about that and looking for the definition of what that will, what that will mean. And then fourth, and again, not very clear at this point in legislation, but there's a fourth category that allows you to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Again, not clear what that means, if it has to be directly related to the COVID or not. We'll keep an eye on that. We have been receiving caution that until further guidance is received, don't plan on spending this on straight out capital projects that aren't related to the COVID at this point. But again, the devil will be in the details of what happens there, and we'll continue to stay in touch. We've been trying to keep Rosemarie and the staff up to speed on what's been going on weekly and on COVID issues, so we'll continue to work on that. And there is a broad list of other funding sources in the bill that may be of interest to city. There's $3 billion in this bill, which is 10 times the normal budget for the Economic Development Administration. These are for public, these are for economic development projects. I know we talked to Rosemarie and the staff about that spring when there was a similar pot in the first CARES Act. These are great funds available to the city. Usually, it's a 50-50 match for these funds. In the case, these, this case, because they consider it an emergency, they're more likely an 80-20 match, federal to local. And a special note, in this tranche of funding, 25% of the project funds are set aside for communities that experienced losses due to, experienced losses due to down, or lost travel and tourism. So probably nowhere in Florida, Pinellas County has been more impacted by a loss of travel and tourism. There's $100 million that they need in part to respond to the COVID, which is trying, respond to their normal needs. There's $200 million for the FIRE Act Safer Program, which allows fire departments to hire more employees. There's $7 billion for broadband for schools and libraries, we're standing in a library. And some of those funds may be set aside for sectors of the community that are having trouble accessing the internet. There may be broadband in their community, but they may not be able to access it, and so that's been a difficulty for, for students trying to work from home. So there is that. Finally, one other note, and we're, I'm going to give you more details on this, but if you recall, in the first CARES Act, there was a requirement that small businesses and low, and government had to provide family medical leave and emergency medical leave for reimbursement to cities and communities for that. It did provide a tax credit for small businesses. So the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties was very concerned about that. This legislation actually provides a tax credit or a credit to you so you can get back some of the funds that you might have to invest in, in providing a family medical leave. Happy to answer any questions on that. And then just real quick before I do that, let me just, I think the mayor and others wanted to talk briefly about, there's been some question about what's the future of the Opportunity Zone Program. Opportunity Zone Program was created by square governors, I think you provided input. The governor then sent forward to the Department of Treasury recommendations for tracks, favorable investment in communities. Currently, there are 8764 Opportunity Zones in the country. Two new ones were added in Puerto Rico last year. There are 16 in Pinellas County, including one here in, there's been $15 billion in direct, they create, they create opportunity funds that invest funds in the Opportunity Zones, so there's been $15 billion in direct opportunity fund investment in Opportunity Zones. That increased actually popular, and Treasury estimates that there's been almost $75 billion in total investment in, in Opportunity Zones as a result of those opportunity fund investments. And there are more than 900 qualified opportunity funds that are registered with Treasury so far. So just briefly, in case you're not aware, there are really three major benefits to creating an opportunity fund for use in an opportunity zone. The first is you can defer, you can take capital gains you've generated from other investments and invest them in an opportunity fund and defer the payment of the capital gains tax by doing that. And you can roll over those capital gains on those, on those realized capital gains until the end of 2026. Second of all, if Opportunity Zones, actual opportunity fund is not subject to capital gains tax, if you hold it for 10 years, you pay no capital gains as an investor on the, on what you've realized during that 10-year investment. The original gain, though, that you put in there, and Mayor, you know more about this than I do, I'm sure, but the original gain you put into the fund is still taxable after the 10-year period, but you can continue to defer it. And then finally, one of the, one of the key situations right now is it created a, a two-step process to reduce the basis, or to increase the basis of your original investment, so that then defers your capital basis of your investment by 10%. And if you held the investment for seven years or more, you can increase it by 15%. Unfortunately, the second, the 15% increase, you had to have your investment in place by 2019, so you're, you're outside the seven-year window right now, but you still have time between now and the end of the year to, to take, affect a benefit of the 10% investment. There's some legislation that has been introduced to extend this by two years to allow investors to take advantage of both opportunities. The good news is that President Biden and Vice President Harris, and, so there was thought early on after the election that the administration might not be supportive of Opportunity Zones and might try to eliminate the program and reap the revenue from somewhere else. That doesn't appear to be happening, and this new Secretary of the Treasury, Janet Yellen, has been quiet on the issue. There was a GAO report in November that talked about the need for more transparency and reporting on Opportunity Zones, and that may also generate some additional legislation. So the Biden administration does propose continuing Opportunity Zone, social equity issues. They want to do four thing, or I'm sorry, four things in, in, with the new Opportunity Zone Program or reform it to increase transparency, to make sure that Opportunity Zones are in zones that are going to create social benefits very well right now. They want the opportunity funds to partner with community organizations. I know you just had a meeting of the CRA to, and nonprofit organizations to try and measure, set goals and measure outcomes. They want to look at reassigned right now, opportunity phone, funds self-certify. They sign a form, they say, we will adhere to all the standards. They are looking to potentially require opportunity funds to be by individuals. One thing that may be of interest, I'm not sure what, what is, the interest is in Opportunity Zones in Clearwater. There has been concern, there was hope that Opportunity Zones would create more affordable housing opportunities and the kind of, a, a difficult use of Opportunity Zones because of some of the requirements, investment requirements in there. There's actually a requirement that if you're going to invest in an Opportunity Zone, you have to double the value of the investment you initially made or the property you initially made. So you buy a property for $100 million, they want to see the value increase to $200 million as part of that Opportunity Zone investment. They feel like that increase in investment is too high if you're going to dedicate some of your property, your project to affordable housing. I'd like to see that reduced by half if possible. So that's something else, you, the previous administration was slow, the program was signed into law in late December, in December 2017, but most of the rules and regulations didn't roll out till late 2018, and they were rolled out in tranches, and so it was very confusing for investors on what to do, and so they were slow on the uptake. The COVID pandemic obviously created problems last year, that slowed investment, but as I said earlier, the last half of the year, it actually spurred investment, so that was a good sign. The IRS continues to issue relief during the COVID period, has pushed out a few of the deadlines, which is helping investors. And then finally, there is legislation introduced to do a variety of things with the Opportunity Zones if you're looking, or your economic development folks are looking at, I think it's pretty clear they're going to continue, although the current chairman of the Senate Finance Committee opposes them and has introduced legislation to repeal them. It doesn't seem like he has enough support to do that. There are, is legislation to increase reporting and transparency. There's that legislation to extend the program, which would expire in 2026 to 2028 by two years. There's legislation to change some of the census tracts to reflect changes in income levels. Something to keep in mind, I don't know if it'll impact your Opportunity Zone, but obviously we just went through a census count. That census count has created all kinds of problems for Opportunity Zones because some of the census tracts in the country have been split, some of them have been renumbered, some of them have been eliminated, and, and obviously some of the data in those census tracts has changed over the last 10 years since they were created. And so there's a little bit of uncertainty out there. If you create an Opportunity Zone, a census tract is numbered a certain way, and now that census tract no longer exists, there are people saying, well, what does that mean to me? And so I don't know the answer to that, and that's, again, we'll have to keep an eye on that for you. I don't know what the impact has been on the Clearwater Census Track. I, I think that, I mean, that's pretty, try to keep it, it's a confusing program. I'm not a, I'm not a financial investor, but we'll continue to work with you on that. And I know Denise is looking at the Opportunity Zones, and I'm like, my Delta County's been doing a good job at marketing the Opportunity Zones here in Pinellas County, so. Mayor, Council, happy to enter. Sorry to go through that all so fast, I know you have a busy agenda, just any questions I can answer, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, if, Mayor, can I reclaim my time for one second? I did forget the one issue. One of the other big changes, and Mayor, this goes back to your first term as Mayor, is Congress is reinstituting. Congressional earmark process, which are now called community-focused programs. And this is, Congress lasted, provided earmark funding in 2010. My former boss, Bill Young, was a huge proponent of, of good can be done with those congressional earmarks. So Congress is, is in the process of bringing back the congressional earmarks. Like anything with Congress, it's kind of a 50-50 situation now. We, the House Democrats are definitely on board, and they have put out guidance, we've shared with Rosemarie the guidance for that, which accounts will be available for earmarking, the guidelines, the forms that are required, all those things. We have those in place and, and we're ready to work. Rosemarie's provided a couple suggested, three suggested earmark projects, all of which would fall in the categories that are now that we know played in the program or not. Right now, there's a House Republican prohibition on earmarks within their conference, and the Senate Republicans have a similar prohibition in their, in their guidelines, so we don't know if Republicans are going to submit earmark requests or not. We don't know yet if Senate Democrats are going to do earmarks. There's some concern if the Republicans don't do it, the Senate Democrats may not do it. We don't know the answer to that yet. So hopefully more to follow this week. I was just reading a story on the way over here this morning about House Republicans are still knotted up on what to do here, and so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that for you. But there are projects on here related to managing Clearwater, there's a project related to your computer-aided dispatch and records management system for the police department, and there's a mental health co-responder program on here. All of those would be good projects for this. One last thing on projects, I know Councilman Albritton is very interested in the Clearwater Transit Center. We work together at PSTA and have been talking about that for some time. I think the strategy there is not to do that as an earmark, because the project is larger. These earmarks, by the way, are going to be in the $250,000 to $1 million, $1 million and a half dollar range. The Clearwater Transit Center would obviously be more expensive than that, but that is a good candidate for a build grant program, and so we have been working with the PSTA and the city on preparing a build grant application that knows the funding opportunity won't come out probably till next month and have to respond by sometime in May. And so there's, Congress and the administration want to see broad community support for anything you do. So anything you're looking to do, whether it's the Transit Center, or the Management Clearwater, or whatever it might be, they're really going to rely upon communities to provide letters of support from the community, chambers of commerce, other interest groups, environmental organizations, it's an environmentally-related project, resolutions by the council, resolutions by the county, MPO, forward panels, all those kind of things. The more, the more broad support you can generate for these projects, whether they're going forward to working with you on that, I think there's a great opportunity this year. Sorry, now I got.
Not at all. Questions for Mr. Glenn, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, what I, one of the thing, so the, the, the main hook for the transportation bill is the legislation, every five years, Congress has to pass a big bill that authorizes the country's transportation and transit projects. Funds are, are highways, funds are transit agencies, funds railroad, all that. So it's a, it's about a $500 billion a year program. I'm sorry, $500 billion over a five-year program, mainly funded by the gas tax, to supplement the gas tax, to make sure this goes. Most of that money, probably 80% of that money goes to the state departments of transportation, and that's the money that comes down in their, in their annual spend plan. That's where that money goes. So there are costs for their capital needs, buying electric buses and other things. So now that's the $500 billion part of it. Then they're talking about adding as much as another trillion to $2 trillion onto that to support other things like clean energy.
Resiliency.
Broadband, all those type. So we don't know how broad that's going to be, and we also don't know how they're going to pay for that, whether they're going to, you know, deficit finance it or raise revenue to, to support that.
So the reason I was asking, I'm trying to, conflicting with their bill grant for the honeymoon island, Dunedin Causeway Bridge project, or project to run through the resiliency or the infrastructure, to go, instead of a bill grant, get it through that, because there's going to be some money. What's your take on that?
First of all, just in the fiscal '21 appropriations bills that were signed into law in December, so there's a billion dollars for build grant, which are these competitive grants that are from around the country. There's usually 10 grants and mills for everyone that's funded, so it is highly competitive. So their, their strategy should be to continue to apply for the bill grant, because that's going to, that application's going to come up and the deadline will close before we know what the final resolution of any infrastructure bill is. So, you know, not knowing what the future of the infrastructure of the bill grant, which I think we're out of planning to do, and then potentially look as, as a, they are going to do some earmark spending in the big infrastructure bill, and so there may be an opportunity.
PSTA changed their course, we want to go for the bill grant.
Right.
But I was trying to talk the county into maybe going for the resiliency, you know, infrastructure.
Yeah, that's correct. Now Tampa did get, Hillsborough County did get two bill grants last year, one for downtown and one for the east side of the county on the I-4 corridor there, so. But you, it's very rare that a county would get two bill grants in the same cycle.
Pinellas has never got one.
No, they haven't, that's what we keep saying, so it's time. We, we had a, we had a call with the, the DOT last week and talked to them about that, so they're sensitive to the fact that Pinellas has never received one.
Thank you.
Other questions from?
Do you, so this, I, the financial stuff is fascinating and opportunity zones and whether that's going to get extended is, is really interesting. Do you monitor any legislation at the federal level about voter rights, protecting?
I'm sorry, about voter?
Voter rights.
Voter rights? We do. I mean, I monitor just out of interest, I have not really had a client interest in voter rights, but Congress just passed a major bill last week, H.R. 1, related to voting issues. Future of that's unclear in the Senate, that requires 60 votes to go anywhere in the Senate, so not sure if that's going to make it out. But there are other issues they're looking at. Congress did provide money last year to, to support state and local governments in administering elections, to help make sure that the voting systems they use are secure. And so, but, I mean, this legislation, you know, would try longer early voting periods. It does address mail-in ballots to some degree. Congress did provide more money last year for the postal service to make sure that mail-in ballots were processed quickly and on time. And so, I mean, I do, if there's specific, specific issues, I'm happy to talk to you about that or to share them with Rosemarie, we're happy to keep an eye on tracking for you.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mr. Horn?
Yes, a lot of information this morning, you know, kind of like a fire hose treatment. But, but I want you to know that that's been very, very helpful. It's great for our staff to hear someone with your depth of knowledge. You know, you have been at this for a long time and it's great for us to be able to have someone as experienced as you to, to kind of help us understand and unravel, you know, the kinds of things that are happening in Washington. So I just want to share that with, to provide feedback. So to hear this presentation this morning on the myriad of topics that you talked about gives us a head start, quite frankly, on some of these things so that we can make sure that we're tracking and we can advise our council on where, you know, we can, we can ask them to help as necessary, as well as give you feedback, you know, on, on things that we're doing.
I appreciate that. He says I'm experienced, that means I'm getting more gray hair some day.
At least you have hair. At least you have hair.
That's right.
Yes, that's right.
What I would say, Senator, we are, we are, we're learning with you, so, you know, it's a constant evolution. Rosemarie's been great, we've been staying in close contact and, and we're having, please send questions. That's, I mean, you know, if you, if there's something you have, we, we want to, want to make sure you're, you're doing things the right way and that you're getting everything that's due to the city and to the community, and so appreciate that. We've enjoyed working with you and your staff, so.
Well, I'm glad to hear that there's talk about extending the opportunity zones because I think that's critical. I hope our staff, I'm sure Denise is on top of all of the data to see if anything changes with that. And then I just want to make sure that our staff, and I know you're going to be doing everything necessary, Jay, to make certain that we dot all our i's and cross all our t's on all of the CARE Act money so that we, you know, make certain that we don't misstep. I also want to work on the earmarks or community project funding requests. I'll have to get used to that one. But I appreciate all you've done over the years for the city, Mr. Glenn. I would echo everything the city manager said. You've been a very steady hand in guiding the city, so I appreciate that. Is everyone comfortable with the legislative priorities?
Yes.
May I place an consent for Thursday?
Yes, that's, all right. Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Just, can I just, one other thing, I forgot to mention, on the payment, I forgot